Napa Valley College, Union of Classified Employees, NVC-UCP Labor Agreement for the period of 2018 through 2021. The district and the union agreed to numerous language changes in the agreement effective October 1st, 2018. Internal equity adjustments from the 2017-2018 Classification and Compensation Study were addressed. The salary schedule for classified professionals was adjusted to be 2.25% between all ranges and 5% between steps A through H, with ranges 11.5 through 13.5 being eliminated, and ranges renumbered with no half-step starting at range 1. Market rate adjustments for classifications identified by the 2017-2018 Classification and Compensation Study that were at 10.5% or more below market shall be addressed for ranges 14 through 19.5. Effective July 1st, 2019, the salary schedule will be adjusted to reflect a 5% longevity increment for employees who have completed 15 years of service. Market rate adjustments for classifications identified by the 2017-2018 Classification and Compensation Study that were at 10.5% or more below market shall be addressed for current ranges 20 and above. The salary schedule will be increased by 1% at all ranges and steps. Effective July 1st, 2020, the salary schedule will be increased by 3% at all ranges and steps. The revised agreement and salary schedules will be posted on the college's Office of Human Resources webpage. That was a lot to read, but a good accomplishment. All right. So now we're moving on to 6.2, Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Dodd, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
6.3, Adoption of the Agenda. We are pulling, do I need to say that now? We're going to be pulling item 14.1. That's NVC Disability Support Programs and Services.
And I would say staff has restructured that, and then we're going to be doing that next month.
I just had a quick, I noticed that there was a significant change in how the agenda was organized. I just wondered if there was anything to comment on.
I was going to get there. So you guys probably did notice some changes in the agenda, obviously. So the biggest change being that we've taken action and information items and put them into the actual areas rather than having them all in a separate category. So we'll see how the changes work. I was hoping that it would move things along, so tonight is our...
Yeah, I would also, I'll just add, I think it adds more contextual understanding. So if you're addressing student affairs, then you're going to find information and action items in that section versus, you know, a whole plethora of information items that jump all over. So it allows us to focus, and sometimes the tie is very natural. So you'll have to keep your wits about you, and we'll keep you oriented, you know, which are information items and which are action items, because they're now intermingled a bit, but we'll work it through. I have faith.
All right. So other than the one item pulled, any objections? So agenda is approved by consensus. So moving on, Section 7, Administrative Services. This is Information Discussion Action Items. This is an action item, 7.1, Napa Valley Community College District Audit Report. So we're going to have a brief presentation by auditor Ben Levitt and the Chair of the Audit and Finance Committee trustee Baker will report out. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Bouncing between agendas, hold on. We have our presentation first, sorry. I was a little excited to get us out.
Don't take it personally, okay?
I'm sorry, I just want to say at tonight's meeting, we're actually being joined by John Dominguez, who is also a partner in the CWDL Audit Firm and worked on our audit. The Audit and Finance Committee was addressed by Ben Levitt last week, and so John is here, and he should be saying all the same things that Ben said last week, so.
Is he going to show us his socks? He always has really cool socks.
I might be disappointing you. A little bit, a little bit of flair. Thank you. As mentioned, the Audit Committee did have a chance to review the report in detail, so I've got a little bit of a summarized version. I just wanted to point out some highlights and some results from the audit, and I'll open it up to any questions you may have about the results, the procedures, or anything related to the audit. But most importantly, the opinions we've rendered in the report are unmodified as it relates to the financials. And so what that means is the information provided to us by management, the information provided to the State Chancellor's Office on the submission of the 311, the final version was accurate, it was complete, and that's what we really spend our time in the fall looking at, is those dollars and cents. So we believe that that information was accurate, was complete, and certainly appreciate all the assistance of management and of staff. We look at a number of transactions, a number of different documents to come to our conclusion. It takes a number of weeks of work, a number of hours, but we certainly appreciate that. So the end result in the financials is very positive with that unmodified opinion. And one thing you might have noted in there on the core financials was a change in the OPEB. That's been a big topic of discussion. There was a new accounting standard required for implementation this year. That was GASB 75. And just to kind of give you an overview of what went on and discussed in the Audit and Finance Committee, that change brought on an additional liability related to OPEB. So you may recall several years back, we had the same change related to pensions under GASB 68, where the district had to bring on the full liability, its proportionate share of the PERS and STIRS system. We're now required, and the district is now required, to do that for other post-employment benefits other than pensions, so health, welfare, dental, vision, all those types of benefits. And so the result of that was a liability of $41.9 million. Obviously, a very significant change from past accounting practices. That number has always existed. This accounting change simply mandated that to come on the face of the financials. So as, again, we talked about with pensions in the past, it's driving a negative, you know, total net position, which historically had been kind of a red flag, something, you know, is amiss when you had a negative net position. Unfortunately, for California community colleges and other governmental agencies, participating in the PERS and STIRS plans here in the state and offering OPEB programs, that's kind of our new normal. So not to be alarmed when you see that. We've confirmed with rating agencies, with, you know, accreditation, ACCJC, those folks are really comparing you to your peers when they're evaluating the fiscal, you know, health instability of a district. So we think that the Napa Valley College does remain in, you know, a strong, stable financial position, despite the fact that several years back, we would have said, you know, hey, again, this negative, what's happened? It's not a bad thing. It's a new norm, unfortunately. So that's the GASB 75 side. I just wanted to touch on the pensions a little bit. Unfortunately, both the STIRS and the PERS systems at the state level missed some of their earnings estimates, and so what that did was increase those total liabilities. On the STIRS side, it had been $80.8 billion underfunded. That rose to $92.5 billion. And on the PERS side, it had been $19.7. That went up to $23.9 billion. So the district is simply taking its proportionate share of those numbers. As you know, that's being, you know, funded through rate increases, both on the PERS and STIRS side, which we're really focused on, has the district budgeted and does it have an ability to meet these ever-increasing employer contribution rates? And our conclusion was, yes, they're absolutely adequately budgeted and accounted for. So we hope to see in the future increases in the earnings of both systems, because that would, in theory, drive that liability down. But volatility is a big thing when it comes to the PERS and STIRS system. So that's maybe the last thing I want to mention on that, is just to make you aware. If we look at a 10-year average, hopefully both of those systems are fairly stable, and hopefully those liabilities are decreasing. I know the new governor has made it one of his objectives to increase the state contributions. They're talking about a number in the three to three and a half billion dollar range for the STIRS side. But as I just mentioned, that total liability is $92.5 billion. So while three is a nice start and will certainly help, we'd like to see, and all would like to see, that trend really continue and have that liability decrease, which will directly impact your proportionate share. So enough about bad news on pensions and earnings in the state. Some good news on the state compliance side. As you know, we're required to look at a number of programs under the contracted district audit manual. I had very, very positive results on those. The only finding that we did report was just on the initial submission of the 311, very, very minor item. When it comes to compliance, our approach is black and white. Anything that's not absolutely perfect, we're going to bring to your attention. And so that's all we saw on that initial submission of the 311 was some information that management was still making sure was absolutely perfect from the dollars and cents, which they did submit in a revised version. So very, very minor item, but wanted to bring to your attention nonetheless. Very positive results on the federal compliance as well for student financial aid. Management of that program continues to be very, very strong. So good results overall. Wanted to just bring those highlights to your attention. Any questions that you have about the audit that is before you, results, procedures, anything along those lines, I'd be happy to address.
Well, the Audit and Finance Committee, we did meet and had the same, or more lengthy
presentation, and our recommendation to the board is that the board accept the audit as submitted. And I like your socks.
Thank you. All right. We kind of jumped ahead earlier, but do I have a motion and a second to approve the audit report?
I still second.
Do we have any public comment? Hearing no public comment, I do have a motion and a second. Trustee Baldini motioned. Zara seconded. All those in favor? We'll just do it. I don't have it. I don't have it. It's not on this one. This isn't the normal laptop. Should we do oral? So all those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Okay. So moving on to Section 7.2. This is the California Community College Chancellor's Office Annual Financial 2017-2018 and Budget Report. Mr. Parker?
So we did also review this with the Audit and Finance Committee at last week's meeting, and so this is our annual submission. And I do just want to make one comment on the 311 report, and that is that it's a 48-page report. It's a very lengthy submission process. And the primary reason that there was some missing information when we filed it the first time is that the auditing function that you invoke at the end of the submission process was not working properly. And so it told us that we passed the audit and that everything had been submitted, when in fact, there were a few pieces of information that were missing. As John mentioned, they did not find that to be significant enough to warrant a modified opinion, and so we have an unmodified opinion for state compliance. In terms of the report, I will just call two items to your attention that we discussed at the Audit and Finance Committee meeting. And the first one, the first section of the 311 report has to do with our reporting on our compliance with the 50% law. And remember, the 50% law says that we must spend at least 50% of our general fund unrestricted dollars with certain items that are outside of that or exempted from that. But we must spend at least 50% of our general fund unrestricted dollars on instructional activity. And the state is very specific. Instructional activity is what happens in the classroom, and so it's faculty salaries, it's instructional assistant salaries. It does not include librarians, it does not include counselors, it is strictly activity that happens in the classroom. We were in compliance with the 50% law this year, but our, if you look at the middle of that page, you will see that in that first column, which is the activity that qualifies for instructional activity, we were at 50%. So it's about, it's compliant, but it's something that we will be monitoring, and we have some reports that we've set up to allow us to monitor on an ongoing basis to ensure that we remain in compliance with the 50% law as we move through our expenditures in the current fiscal year and as we budget for future fiscal years.
Hey, Bob?
Yes.
A question. So it's, this is kind of like balance sheet, so it's a snapshot. So at the time of this submission, is, or is this more of a, can we look at this number as a rolling number or a moving number, or is it, is there a hard moment when it becomes 50?
Well, so the state asks us to look as of June 30th, to say, if we look at the fiscal year that ended June 30th, as of June 30th, where were you in terms of the compliance with the 50% law? And so it is, if, as we would go back and make adjustments, we could be at 50.1 or 50.2, but I think the point is that there have to be really significant numbers to increase that percentage even by a tenth or two tenths of a percent.
And my point for the board is that, you know, we'll, since we look at this often, you should have, you'll have a good clue moving along, and we'll certainly bring it to your attention if we felt before the June 30th deadline that it was in, and I would address it. I'll be on the phone with somebody and then figure that out.
At least the State Chancellor's Office, right? So the other thing I want to bring to your attention, and this is on, so if you look through this report, you will see that this report includes all of our funds. It does not include our foundation activities. So it doesn't include district auxiliary services, the VWT Foundation, or the Napa Valley College Foundation, but our childcare activities, our associated student body activities, our bond activities, so payments that we're making, debt service on our bonds, all of it is included. You will see, we do quarterly 311 reports. The quarterly 311 reports only focus on general fund unrestricted, and so they're only about three pages long. It's this annual report that goes into the great amount of detail. If we look at page 33, let me bring that up for you. And again, as Dr. Kraft said, this is a snapshot in time. And so looking at Fund 11, which is our unrestricted sub-fund, you will see in the middle of the page, it says excess or deficiency of revenues over expenditures, and it shows a number of $2.6, $2.8 million. Once you factor in other financing sources and other outgo, it's actually $2.6 million. Now, does that mean that we had $2.6 million, a $2.6 million deficit last year? And the answer is no, for a couple of reasons. First of all, we had included in the budget this year, or for fiscal year 2018, as well as the previous fiscal year, the use of $490,000 of our fund balance to fund PERS and STIRS contribution rate increases. So that was a planned use of fund balance. There are a couple of other things that are reflected in this number that will reverse out in the current fiscal year. There were about $300,000 worth of prior-period expenses that will be offset by a transfer from our OPEB fund. So it was payments that we made for, excuse me, retiree health benefits in April, May, and June of the previous fiscal year. Those funds will come over, so that will be offset. We also purchased approximately $300,000 worth of IT equipment that hit our books as of June 30th, but are actually for part of the Technology Refresh Program that we are implementing in our current fiscal year. So those are expenses that were paid out of last year's budget that will actually impact this year's budget, and those funds will drop to the bottom line to increase our fund balance in, under expenditures in this year. But about $150,000 of capital improvements that will be paid out of the Capital Improvement Fund, and so that will come back. And then the other thing that happens, and it's, we're not unique, it happens throughout the state system, is that there's something that the state refers to, the State Chancellor's Finance Office refers to as the final revision. And the final revision, where they recalculate all of the funds that you would receive from the state in various areas based on your number of students served and the achievements of those students, that final revision takes place in February of every year. If you look a little further down the page, you see prior year's adjustments of $916, almost $917,000. Those are funds that were reported as that excess or deficiency of revenues over expenditures in last fiscal year that were recovered in this fiscal year. And so a couple of things to say, if you look at the ending fund balances of June 30th, as this report shows, of $4,079,000, that actually reflects a 9.5% surplus, just as this report states. 9.5% fund balance reserve. Remember, we're required to have a 5% fund balance reserve, so it's significantly in excess of that. We do anticipate that once the dust settles on these numbers, and once we get the revision in February and make the other adjustments based on prior-period expenses, that we will be back to the 13% fund balance that we had budgeted for in this, at the end of this fiscal year.
Any questions?
We, same, we had reviewed the same information, and good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we, our recommendation was to accept the report.
Any questions on the budget? Any public comment on budget? Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion and second. Motion was made by trustee Baldini, seconded by Rios. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
And I will try to wear more interesting socks at the next meeting.
Next, public comment. At this time, the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting but over which the board has jurisdiction. The public may ask the board to place an item related to the business of the district on a future board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. At this time, the board chair will pull those in attendance regarding their intent to speak on any item on the agenda. I do have one speaker card, trustee emeritus Bruce Ketrone on college matters.
Thank you, Mr. President of Board. I used to appreciate when former board members would come and share their information. There are some of us who care deeply about the college mission and love the college dearly. There are others who sometimes leave and we don't see again, and there are some people who will sometimes not provide accurate information from the past. So I came across something that I wanted to share with you, which was the grand jury report from 2007 and '08. I will point to a picture in here which shows a dramatic fire, because one of the aspects of this report, they covered the Napa County Fire Department, interesting aspects, but more importantly, they covered the college. And they were talking about, at this time, and this is issued in the mid-2008, they talked about the bond issue, and they talked about how we had gone for a second bond because the project had not been finished. There have been many who have misrepresented to you that there was something, some sort of a problem with the first bond. The money was approved, the amount was chosen based upon the change in the law to provide funds for the college to make necessary improvements. There was no previous determination or expenditure of funds to get hard budget items, because that was not the appropriate way to deal. We got the money, and the college sat down to meet the needs. Could it have been done differently? Yes, and it probably should be in the future, but there's some experience, which, what I hope you will take away is here's a report that says nothing about what's been said to you so many times in the last four years about something wrong done with the bond and money was wasted. That's not the case, and I was going to leave that with you. The second thing is, there, one of my concerns when I was on the board was that we were the owners, totally by accident, we were the owners of the old armory. By accident, when the college district was set up in 1942 and where they were made divisions, the college ended up owning that piece of land, that actually, that division wasn't made until the college was split off in 1965. But the little piece of land that had been leased to the armory in 1947, I think it was, and it's something like a 49-year lease, and that little piece of land somehow got assigned to the college even though we had nothing down there. The stadium next door was with the high school district, the bus yard next door was with the high school district. We accidentally owned that. So when I came on the board, I was concerned, oh, it's wonderful, we have this thing, what is its benefit and what is its burden? What was its cost? What was its benefit? And as much as I tried, I determined the cost exceeded certainly the benefit of having it. So I was thrilled when it was finally turned over to the high school district. And I went by there the other day, and I found that they are using that old armory, and they are converting it at a $5 million cost into being the facility to provide for the cooking and the food facility and the storage facility, which is a wonderful community facility, especially in terms of disaster. I encourage everybody to go by. You won't have the opportunity, I had to meet the construction manager who provided me a flag that was left there, and I'm going to return this flag to Napa Valley College as I was promised, and I'm sure it will be put to good use. Maybe I should give it to Oscar, because he's closest, and he'll let the students know the history of what's going on. And the third reason that I wanted to speak is that when I joined the board, there was a board consensus that we would donate our $50, that's right, we got $50 a month for, at that time, to the scholarship. And you'll notice that every year given out as a scholarship by the college foundation is a trustee scholarship. And the donations that you make, whether it's $5 or $50 a month or whatever the amount's allowed, we have a number of very committed persons on the campus who donate from their monthly income that goes to the college foundation for the scholarships. I would encourage all of you to participate in the scholarships. When we at the foundation go out to people to make our appeal, we want to have 100% of our foundation members contributing, and by the way, it's more than $5 a month. So the idea is I'm encouraging everybody to contribute to the scholarship funds that you can too, can have the satisfaction of doing that. I wish to acknowledge my colleague, Mr. Baldini, because he, like my wife and I, has set up a scholarship, and he enjoys handing it out, but he also does it with the attribute of giving the shovel. And if you haven't heard his shovel speech, please take some time to hear it, and thank you for the time to address you.
Thank you, trustee Ketrone. I hadn't seen you behind the podium there, so it's good to see you. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Bruce. Moving to Section 9, Reports. First, Academic Senate Report, Amanda Badgett.
Good evening, Board. First, I would like to thank all of you for convening this time last week in, to do, among other things, approve two new permanent faculty and a full-time leave replacement. I am looking forward to having an opportunity to introduce to Christopher Howe, Arlana, well, Christopher Howe, Arlana Hayes Frayland, and, sorry, Karen Canepa, I've not actually had a chance to introduce to them. The wild, wonderful world of academic senate, but I believe I will have an opportunity in the next week or so to do just that. The senate will be having its first business meeting this Tuesday, and we are sort of starting, hitting the ground running with various full-time faculty hiring... starting, hitting the ground running with various full-time faculty hiring committees. We are also diligently working on various board policies that will make their way to you. And also, by the end of this term, we will be tackling what our committee structure will be looking like moving forward since our pilot of the last two years will be coming to an end. I wanted to also mention that in my capacity as a member of the leading from the middle team, we put together an exercise on flex day of last Friday in which we asked the college community gathered in the lobby of the Performing Arts Center to engage in an activity in which they are to take the role of student, and with some supporting documents, some supporting documents provided, they were to build a schedule. And the catch was that each table had a profile of a student, and the hypothetical student could be a parent with a child in our Child Development Center, or an athlete who was on the baseball team and had to build a schedule around the training, the, you know, the practices and the games and so forth. Anyway, it, I think it garnered a lot of interest and some really interesting points about the challenges that our students face, admittedly in this somewhat artificial environment that we were putting ourselves in that, that place again, since for some of us, it's been many years. But in any case, I think it was at least eye-opening and certainly another opportunity for us as a community, not merely group of faculty, group of classified administrators, but that each table was comprised of members of the college community and mixture, and so communicate, just an opportunity to problem solve together, I think was a really positive outcome. So I guess I will close by saying that this is significant for me in that this is the last January board meeting I will be attending, and this semester marks the series of lasts for me. This is my last semester in my role as academic senate president. So one of the last things I will be doing is, I hope, welcoming a new colleague into this position along with our other vice presidents' positions and secretarian treasurer. And so with that, I close. I will, at this point though, since it's inevitable, we're, we're going to get there, Kristi Iomoto wanted me to let you know that she is sorry she cannot be here tonight. She had an unforeseen conflict, so it looks like actually I'm the only one here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. I do see a lot of folks missing there. I'm going to go ahead and just go through the reports as they would be. Report 9.2, Administrative Confidential Senate Report. I do have a note here that Dean Harris is out ill. 9.3, Associated Students in Napa Valley College Report.
I have, yeah, I have a report.
Do you have a report for Raphael?
Okay. So it starts with, "Good evening, Board. Sorry to dash away after the Brown Act training, but I have a class to check in with. I've delegated the reading to, of my report to our student trustee, Josefa." That's what it says. The report is brief in that we've just returned from our winter break, of course. Prior to the first day of classes, the ASNVC Board held a training day on campus, serving as a time to brainstorm and plan for the remainder of our term. That is pretty much it for this month, but we'll see how the term goes, comes into view. Thank you, Raphael Manzo.
Thank you, Raphael, through Josefa. Next is Classified Association Report, Jean Chard. Did not see her. 9.5, Classified Senate Report, Martin Shoemaker. He is not with us either. And Faculty Association Report, we heard about Kristi Iomoto. Hope everything's okay. And 9.7, Dr. Kraft, President's Report.
Yeah, a couple of comments, kind of following up a little bit on Amanda's theme. It's been a great opening semester, started with an all-staff convocation, which I appreciate it because basically we, we get everybody in the same room, everybody that can, for classified administrators and faculty, and it's, if, I think some board members were there, and I've forgotten who was there. Michael was there, and I think the rest of you was early and had to work, you know, yeah. I, I appreciate it. You can feel the difference, generally speaking, you know, when everybody's in the room, that, as Amanda alluded to, at, at those assignments and exercises, having classified is inordinately helpful, you know, in some cases because they deal with this. And so it was very interesting, and, and I think I challenged the group, you know, we, we've been saying for, since I've been here, it's all about the students and so am I board. Well, we do tend to think in aggregate, but I mean, the, the reality is it's all about a student, right? Because, because each one of these students have such a different background and story that they bring here, that I, I really felt that as a college, we've kind of turned that corner in addressing the individual needs the best we can. Some of that's going to come certainly with the integration of Student Affairs under Oscar, and, I'm sorry, yes, that's right, and Academic Affairs under Eric, and as we're moving along. Couple other pieces, good, good stuff. We talked with Eric's shop today and got a couple, couple things. We have, down at American Canyon, we have four sections rolling right now. Intro to Criminal Justice, Filipina O, American Heritage, Principles of American Government, and Intro to Sociology, with some pretty good sections, so it's coming along, pretty happy about that. Active enrollment, kind of as of today, a kind of a snapshot, about close to 14,000 or so, that's kind of individual. One student can be many of those, taking different pieces, and that's all sites. And parking has seen fewer complaints, except for today, I heard a lot about it, but generally there's parking available, and, and you run into the bureaucratic piece, which is an email that says there's plenty of parking, especially in the lower lots, and then you scroll down and it says the lower lots are closed because of rain. So welcome to college. Counseling Reports, busy two weeks. They've seen nearly 1,000 students through walk-in and appointments, which is a very good piece. And the Welcome Center has been very busy, kind of keeping up and helping students in a whole bunch of ways, just pointing out, wayfinding, putting them in classes, answering those questions that you and I would have if we were strolling on a campus and just trying to assimilate. So, all very good. We are, just as an update, the Scion Group that you approved for campus housing is doing their work, and, you know, meeting with groups, interviewing, doing forums coming up, so they're on track for that campus housing. Space Utilization Study, which is really the college asking an outside group to help us look at our existing spaces, how we're using them, when we're using them, and provide some recommendations on, on improvements. That RFP will be hitting next month? Next month? Next week? Thank you, Bob. Okay. And finally, I would say, and Bruce brings up a good point, the, the foundation is doing great work. They're coming along. Their Wine Education Center Capital Campaign is a little over 3.2 million now in pledges, and they're working throughout the, the county. I think it's a, it's a great thing that they launched their annual, let me see if I have that real fast here, their, the annual pledge is going out to 4,000 friends of the college. That generally brings in somewhere between $40,000 and $60,000 that, that kind of just helps the operations of it. So, all is good there. And I think that really discovers it for me. I'm in good shape here. Thank you.
10.1, approval of the minutes. So 10.1, these are the minutes of the 12, 13, 18 proposed. Does anyone have any? Do I need a motion for that?
Hearing none, they're adopted, right?
Hearing none. These minutes are adopted. 10.2, minutes of our special meeting, this was January 10th. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, those are adopted. Item 11, Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar is a board meeting practice that groups routine business and reports in the agenda, one agenda item, the consent calendar can be approved in one action rather than filing motions on each separately. Are there items on this agenda that you would like to pull from the consent agenda to discuss? Does anyone have any that they want to pull?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion by trustee Baker, a second by trustee Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. And we are moving to 11.2. This is 2019 Napa-Sonoma Small Business Development Center funding. Wait, my, I'm bouncing, hold on, hold on. Ask them that I can keep up with my agenda. We did Consent Calendar, 11.1. 11.2, right? No? All right. 11.1, Academic Affairs Information Discussion.
Are we good, Catherine? I just want to make sure that you, you.
On those?
So the Consent Calendar took us from 11.1 through what?
11.8.
Okay, just want to be sure that we don't have to back up.
Payroll, everything.
Perfect. Thank you. I couldn't hear. Got it, we're good.
So this is 12.1, right? Affairs Information, Accelerating Entrepreneurs in Community Colleges Using the Pop-Up Model and Experienced Learning. This is an action item.
I'll move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Baker and a second by Goff.
Yes.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could I ask a, a question of Diana Shabody about?
Yeah.
I've already approved the item.
Yes, it's nothing to do with approval or, on the, on these grants, particularly Eisenhower, is that, is that affected by government shutdown, or is that stashed away in a secret vault someplace else?
Well, that's a good question. I do not know. No one has told us it. That's.
All right, very good.
It sounds like a, a crack vice president question, I think, right?
So I will say that so far, the news that we're getting is that funds are available for all of the federally funded programs that we have through the month of February. So we're, we're not in any jeopardy at this moment in time for those. We, hopefully, the government, government shutdown will end soon, and funding will become available again, but there's, there's no cause for concern for us at this moment.
Thank you. Thank you, both.
There you go. We pulled 14, so you're in.
We do, moving to 13, which there is no item, but I'll read for the public, it's Human Resources, Information Discussion Action Items. I don't have anything for that. We pulled 14.1, which was our Disability Support Programs and Services. Moving on to item 15, this is Triple CT Board Nominations. And we haven't had, I mean, it's been a couple years, I think, since we actually.
It has, you know, and I can unpack this a little bit, so the, and I think you, the board has some of this information, but this is a Community College League of California. Their Triple CT Board elections occur, and they meet five times a year, it's 21 members, and they, they help lead the policy direction of the board and help with, with kind of the thoughtful addressing of factors that would, that, as they encounter them through legislature or state. Nominations for this board will be accepted from January 1st through February 15th of 2019. So we are close to the, to the edge here. And they're to be made by member district boards of trustees, and each district may nominate only members of its own board, and then generally speaking, those, those board members are on their own to kind of politic through the system a bit. The advantages of, of nominating someone is you, you kind of let the state know that you exist and that you care, and, and if you succeed and place somebody, then you're really represented in, in a good way. Northern California is a little bit shunned because the, the power resides in the, in the southern half, so.
I was nominated in the past, and it does take some campaigning, but would anyone like to be considered for it? Trustee Baldini, maybe?
Well, Mr. Chair, since you have, and third time's a charm, would, are you throwing in your, in your gavel for this, or?
I would, I'd love to see one of you guys do it. Would you? Anyone?
What was your?
I, I would like to nominate you if you'd like to go for it.
Gosh, okay. Just wear the right socks, okay.
There you go.
Yes.
I don't know if you'll make it to every community college in the, the state, but it sure would help. So I'll nominate trustee Baldini for it.
I second that nomination.
Thank you.
All those in favor of that?
Aye.
So your whole board supports you, and we, before do a win.
All right, thank you.
And I'll, I'll follow up with you, Michael, on any information that you might need that would help you.
Yes, yes, please. It's no expense to you.
No expense to the district?
Yes.
At all? All right, yes.
All right. So, next, item 16, this is Board Policy Review and Adoption. So we do have some board policies here. Assuming everyone got to take a look at them, this is an action item, this is a second reading. I have, let's see here, I'm bouncing between two. I do promise you guys, I will have the agenda thing down pat for our next board meeting.
Didn't you create this agenda?
I did, but I'm still bouncing between my cheat sheet and the actual agenda. So this is BP 3605, it's promotional use of district, that was removed. There are no changes proposed to these policies. It is a second. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve these policies.
Move to approve all the policies.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Rios and a second by trustee Josefa. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have approved the second reading of these policies unanimously. Moving on to item 17, Board Reports. So Standing Committee and Other Appointment Reports. Vete Culture and Winery Foundation, have you guys met?
We have not met. In the process of scheduling the meeting.
And DAS has not met yet.
We will meet on the 26th, next month.
That's true, but now he's on the committee.
Right.
Yeah, okay. But the 26th?
Uh huh, February 26th.
And the Legislative Affairs Committee. So.
What's the composition of that?
So that was, I had originally asked if trustee Goff wanted to do that, and I have, so you have reconsidered, and she would like to do that, so I had you and trustee Goff on it, trustee Baker and Goff, and.
And Kawaja.
And Josefa wanted to be on it as well, so you guys can.
Who's chairing?
I was, I would like to have you guys, I mean, you've been on it before, I would think that it would be appropriate for you to chair it, if you'd like to. You guys could meet and change it if you'd like.
So Baker, Kawaja, Goff, on that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then Audit and Finance Committee.
We already.
Got our report tonight. Our Real Property Management Committee. Committee, that's trustee Rios as chair, trustee Baldini and trustee Dodd, I don't think you guys have met. And McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award.
I have Kawaja on this as well. Do you mean to intend that, or no?
I did. We haven't had a student-
No, this is on, uh, that's on Real Property. For McPherson, I think we have Goff.
Yeah.
Right? Is that right, Doc? Yeah.
Right. So, no report for that. So, I am going to do, I talked to Laura briefly about, can, I have two on the Vitaculture and Winery Foundation.
Not by bylaw, but you can have a, you can have a delegate. So, if, who's there right now?
I have Rosara on there now.
So, and would it be Michael, I would suppose, right? Is that what you're thinking?
I'll be a delegate, sure.
Yeah, and you could still attend. There is no issue there. You're still not violating anything, and it's brown, and it's fine. And so, it would be, for continuity, it could, it could work well.
I would hope that you guys could work together and-
All right, okay.
Both being in the wine industry. Okay, so I think at that point, we do have all the committees appointed. Hopefully, you guys will meet soon.
Yeah, I don't have it in my head, but we do have a meeting coming up. I'm sorry, just didn't have it.
Oh, not for, well, all the committees, Real Property and Legislative.
Well, you have a Real Property something coming up. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I think I have on my calendar that there's a Real Property Committee meeting next week.
Do you guys have that all? I'll go to my Real Property Chair, trustee Rios.
We have not called-
I guess I just invited myself.
Well, uh, you know, talking about it, we, we have on the books, we do have, right now, we have you as a member of that committee and me meeting with some of the principals of the wine train for after, after hours to clarify some pieces. Now, that is not as a standing committee a piece. So, right now, it's just a social gathering. But, um, so I'm not sure, Bob, if, I think we may have had something still on. Yeah.
Perhaps, yeah. Thank you.
So, yeah.
Sounds like we'll figure that out.
Okay.
So, moving on to seventeen point two, this is Future Agenda Item Request. So, I'd actually like to pull it open. We've, I've gone through these. It's a new board now. I think a lot of them we have, um, covered, and then the ones that we haven't are on schedule. I'd like to clean it up a bit, and if any of you guys have new agenda items that you'd like to see on there, I'd like to get those in the pipeline. So, I'll start this way, and with the student trustee Husefa.
Can we have trustee Dodd's request?
Which is?
Uh, the, how the board can support ASNBC.
Okay. So, we'll put that in queue, keep that in queue, actually.
That's good. Staff is working on that issue now, and, and I've been working with Oscar a, a bit, so, um, we can, we can bring that in, for sure. Would you, would you like that in February?
Yeah, I'd mind bringing it back in February. I want to clean it up and get some new ones in, so.
Okay.
Trustee Baldini.
I noticed a couple of potholes in the parking lot. It was, didn't we, we covered that, didn't we, the long-term maintenance parking lot?
I think-
Solar panels, or was that part of that bond?
It's kind of the, it was, it, it was in this maintenance and security, and it kind of did mostly of the, the security issue when Amber spoke about it. Was that what you're thinking about? Yeah. Are you talking about a particular kind of bottle, or just?
No, no.
Yeah, okay. So, just trash?
Yeah, the car, potholes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Not the other type, I think that.
I think, um, I'm trying to think in terms of, um, I'm looking towards bomb. I mean, the, the natural piece is to kind of come in when we come in with a campus master plan update, I think, and start to look at, they all kind of, the college utilization study, the campus master plan, which I know we're coming in, it's not on here because we're bringing it. I think that will be a natural time to talk about maintenance and upkeep and all of those things that we're, if we're talking about landscaping and the repair and those kinds of things. Is that what you're addressing?
Yeah, you have fields maintenance, but that's separate.
I was actually just going to suggest, because that was one of my items, if we did, kind of just blended that into facilities and went over, would that be possible?
Sure.
Cover like the grounds and-
Yeah, I think if, if it's okay with you as chair, we'll, we'll probably put a couple of these together because they kind of blend, and see whether we can wrap them into one thing. We'll give you a nice package before the meeting that will give you good information. And then, my guess is that we'll also schedule with the, with the Real Properties, maybe Subcommittee, a piece of that, and then, so you're not into an hour presentation here of some kind. But we'll do our best to make sure we kind of move along on it.
Thank you.
Trustee Baker. Any of these that are currently on there, you're all good? Okay. Um, mine kind of goes with the field maintenances and facilities. Trustee Sagara?
Oh. I'm intrigued by the Community Cultural Center and see, um, you know, what that looks like and, um, what's going to cover. I mean, it's, it's broad, but-
I've heard a lot of-
About partnerships and, um, and all that good stuff, so.
I wouldn't mind if it's possible, and this might be a question for DeHaro, is, I've heard a lot about the mariachi. If that's something that we could tie into the community cultural piece, possibly?
Only if you donate.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we could. I mean, again, this, this, this strikes me as something that's another opportunity for the college to develop or work with, right? So, as, one of the big works, I think, of this semester and next, is going to be getting a grip on, on what the college physicality might look like over the next decade through the district and campus master plan. So, these things about the wine train, or the Community Cultural Center, or the fields, all those are so interrelated that I, um, I've just got to work on a way with staff, see how we can unpack that for you that's manageable. Um, but the, it's, it's definitely something that's on the table, along with a lot of other things.
Okay. Fair enough. Uh, trustee Goff?
I'm, I'm really happy to see the smoking policy on there. I'm very interested in that. Um, but in relation to, again, you talk about facilities and, and, um, the plan for the college, I'd really like to see on there an update about what that center is going to look like at American Canyon High School, and get a progress report on timing and, and I, this is really fresh in my mind because my students are now registering for next year. It's only January, but they're already doing that. And they're very, very excited about the prospect of NBC being on campus, and even sophomores are now saying, can I take a summer school class? I said, yeah, you can. So, I, I really would love to see classes down there in the summer and, you know, really get it going because there is an energy there that I haven't seen before. And I'd love to ride that out and keep that excitement up if we can.
So, perhaps maybe like a AC update?
Would you, would, would the board contemplate a, well, no, yeah, filter would be good. But I think we're almost into the same kind of thing we did today, which is like a, a four to six. I mean, this is, it's big, and we can definitely cover, or even four thirty to six, or something. I think we can cover it an hour and a half and give you a, kind of a good idea of where we're going, not drill down all the way, but address these so at least you have some contextual piece for what's going on.
Yeah, that would be great.
If that's all right, we could put that together, rather than trying to get all these in, in meetings in the middle, because they're all forty-five minutes otherwise, and it's just going to lengthen out, and they're going to be separated, so you're not going to be able to tie them together.
Right. So, have, have like an early meeting-
Yeah, yeah.
Informational kind of thing.
Catherine or-
Right.
Can poll you, or we'll, we'll see if that's okay with the chair. I don't know when that might happen, but soon.
Great. Thank you.
Trustee Rios. Trustee Dodd. All right. So, it sounds like staff has some direction, and we'll keep these up in the pipeline and kind of clean up the ones as we've discussed them. I'm a little early, so I feel like I need to drag something out a little bit here.
Don't do it on our-
All right. So, seventeen point three, trustee and board chair reports. And we'll start down in this direction this time. Trustee Dodd?
Don't anything college-related, but I went to a very interesting, uh, discussion on student housing in San Francisco. More in kind of on the building side of things. A lot of it was dealing with the rising, how are we talking about, um, affordable living in Bay Area communities? There was no real rural communities like Napa, so it's all really around San Francisco area, but had a vice chancellor of UC Berkeley who's in charge of all their facilities maintenance. But they're just talking about different types of projects, how we're envisioning building when construction prices are, are going quite, uh, quite high. So, it was just, it was really interesting, happy to kind of pass around the notes that I had for that meeting, but just talking about different ways of, of student living was very, very interesting.
Thank you. Trustee Rios?
Remembering our Brown Act presentation today, I have nothing.
Fair enough. Trustee Goff?
Nope.
No report? Trustee Sagara?
Nope.
Husefa?
Yeah, just a few things. Uh, starting off with the NBC Foundation holiday. Uh, then, uh, SS's Trio is starting their own newsletter. Um, they did, now they're, um, starting it again. And they asked me to write an article for them. And they said that it would be an honor for the student trustee to write an article for them. So, I accepted and I'm, um, submitted, and let's see how it, how it goes. Then we had our ASNBC Spring Training. We have it each semester, uh, fall, then we have it at spring. And then we had this, our Spring Training before our classes started. Um, then, the last thing in my report is, I'm working with UC Davis regarding, on a project that's researching the causes and effects of the October wildfire, twenty seventeen wildfire. So, that, that also includes surveys and research modules, and, uh, it's a six to eight-week duration period that we're doing this research. Uh, that will include the entire Napa County, including Calistoga, St. Helena, American Canyon, and then we move our, uh, forward to Paradise. And then we come back. That ends my report.
Very interesting. Thank you. Trustee Baldini?
Given Brown Act, uh, presentation, I, I too will defer from making a, a report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Baker?
Uh, just a couple things. Um, first off, tomorrow, um, the California Community College, um, group is doing a webinar on the governor's budget that I'm going to be doing. And, uh, it's probably still time, if people are able to do it, it's at ten o'clock, and they're usually archived if you're not able to do then. Um, also, just based on our conversation at the Audit and Finance Committee about the three eleven report and the fifty percent, um, business and how librarians aren't instructors, and I got all in a twist about that. So, um, I, I've reached out to a, a couple of, uh, colleagues in the library world. Um, a former colleague of mine is now the Executive Director and Chief of Librarians, um, for community colleges. And he and I are going to have lunch sometime soon and kind of get me up to speed on kind of where various efforts are to maybe change that a little. And, uh, also, um, looked, uh, contacted the California Academic and Research Librarians Association, which is an arm of the American Library Association. They are a five oh one C three, so they don't do any lobbying or anything, but they do do a lot of education, uh, on various issues. So, I might be able to bring back some stuff on that, too.
That's great. Good topic for your pledge piece.
Maybe at some point, we could discuss the Dewey Decimal System.
Well, this is one of the few colleges that uses this, so I'm very pleased about that. Because I, because LC makes no sense.
Um, well, I, other than the board workshop this afternoon, I did have a, a nice meeting this afternoon, or this morning, actually, with our, my supervisor for my district, Alfredo Pedrosa, and I represented the college really well. We did a little quick conversation. He's going to be meeting with other leaders in the community and discussing how we can all work together and do what's best for our community. Um, that pretty much is it, unless anyone else wants to go in a closed session.
Man.
So, announcement of our next future meeting, it's going to be February thirteenth. And, yeah, I'm going to adjourn us at eight thirteen.